Exploring Music. This is Bill McLaughlin. Our theme this week.
Good evening. This is the Wednesday, December 13th, meeting, 2017, meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission, and we'll begin with approval of the minutes from the November 8th meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions? Comments?
I did not have any.
Did you see anything? Good.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve this.
Is there a second?
Second.
Scott, second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm gonna stand since I was not here.
Okay. Okay. So Joel, it seems. All right. Correspondence. Is there any correspondence from staff?
Nothing from staff.
Nothing from staff. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to item three, the Transportation Commission meeting report. Joel, do you have...
The Transportation Commission met on November 9th, and I was not there. I was in Burma. I would note that the agenda includes two items of interest. One, campus one-way street reconfiguration proposal. Do you know anything about that? Mike?
I don't.
Oh, I do.
Yeah.
I think I do. On campus, you go from the transit center, you head towards St. August is the next stop. And what they're talking about doing, and it came from the university, was to go up a couple of blocks toward the Student Health Center, up in that area, and do a swing around there so they could get more campus people involved. And it involves, that road goes one way, and they need to switch it in order to make it all work.
Yeah. Okay. And the other item was a discussion of Third Street Corridor Plan. That discussion, I assume, was introduced at the last meeting, but it will be on our agenda for our next meeting. We next meet tomorrow at four in this room. And the Third Street Corridor, there's been a subcommittee working on that, and they will be presenting proposals.
So I had a question about that because I just happened to pull up the city website because my packet doesn't ever seem to arrive in the mail on time. It goes to probably Western Washington and back or something.
Well, my packet arrived just as I was leaving the house.
Oh, yeah. Mine arrived today.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mine arrived today.
You got yours today?
Yeah, I got mine today.
And you got yours today? They were mailed last Thursday.
What? Yeah.
So maybe we're gonna have to push the schedule up a day because one time it came on Thursday, which was really helpful because we'd already met, obviously. But I picked up one for Ann.
Yeah. Well, I printed it off.
Yeah, me too.
Which works fine, too.
Yeah. The only thing that doesn't, well, the only thing that doesn't work for me about that, besides sometimes it's a lot of stuff, is that I don't have a colored printer. So when things are highlighted, it's like...
Well, and my printer printed the west half of it, which...
So, anyway, and so I don't know if it seems to be an issue, but Ann tells me that all of our mail in Moscow goes up to Spokane and then comes back, right?
It's still supposed to be two-day service, so you should've got it on Saturday.
Wow. And that's when it used to come in years past.
Well, I suspect it may be a figment of the holidays, too. Their post offices probably jammed up.
You haven't been getting them on time.
So the post offices...
Yeah. Mine, I had one go south somewhere in the summer, I mean, where there wasn't a holiday bulk mail kind of problem. So I'm not sure. But I do, so I was pulling up the city website, and on the front page is the Third Street Multi-Model Bridge Traffic Calming Project. And so I looked at that, and I went, okay, and I read through it, and it ties more into our discussion later with shared readings. But I just wondered when that was formed and all that stuff, and maybe that happened at the last Transportation Commission meeting.
Well, I think it predates that, but...
Because I was at that last Transportation Commission meeting, and that was when, I thought it just, I got it out because I'm going to go tomorrow. But that's when Les handed out two packets of starter ideal, a Plan A, a Plan B. I went to the trouble to take one and tape it together, which is why I think those tables are like that, because the committee met here today.
Okay.
Today, yesterday, something.
They meet apparently Tuesdays and Thursdays. I don't know when it was formed and what the duration...
It was formed, it came out of that Transportation Committee meeting to have a subcommittee, which is about 10 people, to work on coming up with more plans, better plans, shape it out. And then they will present that. And they came up with a Plan C, and they will give that to the Transportation Committee tomorrow.
And so what's the composition of the subcommittee?
Engineer, there's a camp, I think it's Campus Matt Somebody or Mark Somebody.
I think they have Mike Lowery.
Or Mike.
Mike Lowery, engineering faculty.
Yeah.
Okay. And Les, and like at least four citizens. I don't know. I'm not on it. But anyways, a bunch of people. And anyway, and then it was also Les reported to the Public Works Finance Committee.
Because my comment there is, I think it would have been really helpful to have a liaison with Planning and Zoning, seeing how we're supposed to have some participation in that process. Yeah. So, anyway.
Well, the highlights that came out of the Public Works Finance was that they're looking at having raised ramps, this is all possible, raised pedestrian crossing, which makes a little bit of a ramp, six-inch ramp kind of thing, by the west entry at East City Park, near Lena Whitmore's playground, and near the high school. Those are all really busy intersections. Nothing's final at this point. They'll talk about this tomorrow. They're talking about, there's about 1,000 feet, linear feet of, it's 1,000-something, I guess in feet, of missing sidewalks. Get those done. They're talking about the bulbs.
Oh, would that be east of Hays?
Yeah, there's a bunch of spots. There's a bunch of spots.
East of...
Where there's a spot here and a block there and whatever. Get those sidewalks in. They're talking about the bulb curbs that would increase visibility.
Shorten the intersection.
Yeah, shorten the intersection and increase visibility because they're also by the parking. So when you're way back here and you don't have a bulb, pedestrians over here, the car has to look through, cars can't see them. If they're on a bulbed intersection, then they're not visible, and it shortens the walk. And then a possible reading out here somewhere.
Well, the other impact that happens is when parking is taken off the street, cars speed up because they see a bike lane and two, you know, two bike lanes and two, I mean, it just happens. And I've seen it as a pedestrian. The pattern is starting to happen. And so it becomes even more important to have a safe zone for crossing the street.
Yeah. There was, in the Public Works Finance, there's a grant that they're looking to apply for that would help pay for some of these safety features, particularly around schools. And so a lot of these ideals marry very nicely with this. And so it'll all come up tomorrow.
Anyway, I was just surprised to see this thing come up when I was looking for an agenda. So this news to me.
Well, thanks, Victoria.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
I'm never gonna glue it together, or tape it together.
Yeah. Thanks for pulling...
But it's on the first page.
Yeah, it's right on the front page of the city website.
I skipped over the first page hunting for agendas and so on.
When it showed up there, but that's what's up there.
Yeah. Okay.
So, okay, I guess that's it on that.
Yeah. That's it.
So, item four, time for public comment. There is no one present in the audience, so we will just remind anybody who might be listening that this is an opportunity to come to talk to Planning and Zoning about items that are not on our agenda or currently pending before us. And so just keep that in mind. Item five, approval of relevant criteria and standards for the Indian Hills. Well, I rezone, so I'll let Mike take over from here, please.
Yeah, this is just your standard RCS document. This was from the rezone proposal that we heard on Indian Hills Drive, changing the designation from general business to residential office. Commission recommended for approval, on to city council, and so, as well directed staff to prepare the reasoned statement. And so that's what I've done. It's kind of your standard reasoned statement, goes through some relevant facts and conclusions, and then answers the criteria and standards at the very end of the document. So certainly take any questions you had.
Anyone, any questions? They looked well thought out to me.
And I would comment that I read both the minutes and the reasoned statement, and I would have also voted in affirmative and willing to vote approval for the statement. So...
Okay. So do I, and do I have a motion to approve the proposed...
Move to approve the relevant criteria, the reasoned statement of relevant criteria and standards.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody? Okay. Thank you, Mike. Okay, moving on to item six, which is continuing with our discussion of the comprehensive plan updates and looking at items from the Sustainable Environment Commission and Leitau County Library.
So, yeah, we had, I think I had attended a couple meetings ago, the Sustainable Environment Commission, one of their regular meetings to discuss certain commissions. You know, this is part of our outreach to go around to individual commissions to solicit comments about various issues they'd want to see inserted within the comprehensive plan. I think this stemmed from, actually, when Victoria wasn't on the commission, coming to the commission, she's also on the Sustainable Environment Commission, bringing up the insertion of, I guess, the addressing of climate change within the comprehensive plan. And so they have been working on this for the last couple months, and Steve McGeehan had submitted comments as the chair, and they're attached to your packet tonight. It's about four pages. And I have, I did my best to kind of summarize the entire thing and did a PowerPoint so I can give you an idea. I'll just kind of go through that. I'm sure you've had the opportunity to read it beforehand, but I'll just go through how they propose it fits in with the comprehensive plan. And so this would be, proposed to be inserted within Chapter One. We have a natural resources section of Chapter One, kind of goes through, you know, sets the tone for the natural setting of the Moscow region, discusses vegetation and wildlife, our soil types and minerals that are commonly found, discusses water features like our aquifers, climate, so, you know, what our annual average climate is, as well as air quality. And then we have a section that relates to hazardous areas, so steep topography, since we have some, you know, rolling hills with portions that are fairly steep, that's identified as a hazardous area. We also have flood plains, and those really are the two major. Seismology, you know, we're in a relatively, not that impactful seismic zone B. So, you know, we don't, there is, we are in a seismic zone, but it's not that significant. And then, so the Sustainable Environment Commission would propose to insert a new section under natural resources, right after the natural setting and hazardous areas section. So it'd be 1.3.3, local response to changing global climate conditions. And then they'd go through various topics on that, so water, air quality, energy usage, transportation, infrastructure and environmental impacts, climate migration, food security, public health, and affordable housing. And so, under the local response to changing global climate conditions, kind of focusing on, there's a planning advisory service, kind of a policy guide that the American Planning Association puts out, that's more or less best practices for practicing planners and city councils and planning and zoning commissions. And so it's our national organization, and so they had taken some of that language from that document that they put out on climate change, planning for climate change, and inserted that in the first section. You know, a lot of it talks about different types of mitigation versus adaptation measures. So kind of go through that. You know, what we've always done in the past is not necessarily mention climate change, but we do a lot of things that would help either mitigate or adapt to climate change in the future or the present. And so, you know, they mentioned no regrets approach, where actions taken to adapt to or mitigate climate change are the ones that should be taken anyway for other reasons related to smart growth, sustainability, you know, more of a walkable, bikable, less of a emissions footprint, you know, less driving, higher density, things of that nature that would help promote climate change as well. Our urban forestry, urban tree canopy, stormwater filtration management, you know, a lot of those things help towards climate mitigation. So, and they identify five primary hazard types linked to climate change, and this is nationwide. You know, some regions will get more affected than others, but they have heat waves, strong storms, flooding, droughts, and wildfires. And then there's some communication from Mark Solomon, who's an associate director of Idaho Water Resources Research Institute of the University of Idaho, and talks about kind of the national effects of what climate change would do to the United States and as the Moscow region, what we're likely to see. You know, going through this, I think that my first, you know, thought was that it's written a little bit differently than our comprehensive plan is. So I think if, you know, you wish to see this inserted, I think I would go back and try to summarize and rewrite some of it to make it more consistent with what the language in the comprehensive plan.
That was, that was our intent, anyway.
Okay. And then, you know, as far as the quotes from, or the information from Mark Solomon, great, we have a local person with that, you know, information, but we have like the, we have NOAA, you know, which is a national government organization that has, you know, lots of findings about the patterns and how that's going to change within our area that are consistent with, I'm sure, Mr. Solomon's research. So I think instead of, you know, citing a private communication, I think I would try to go out and get more sources that may be available, you know, in publications put on by National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration. So that's what I, you know, that first introductory, I think that that would be my suggestions there. The water section, you know, promoting further reclamation of wastewater from the wastewater treatment plant, continuing a lot of those incentive programs, like our Wisecape program, where if you convert a portion of your lawn to Wisecape, then you can get a rebate from the city, low-flow fixture, toilet replacement, we have an incentive there to get you a rebate for that, you know, continuing those incentive programs, stormwater management, really through best practices. And then, you know, thinking about developing some maybe underground or surface water reservoirs to deal with, you know, maybe a reduction in snow or water throughout the year. The next section's air quality. Our biggest impact to air quality is not smog, it's smoke from wildfires throughout the region and different areas of, you know, the Northwest and Montana, I guess. And so, you know, we'd be looking at pretty much just, not a whole lot we can do about that. They cite just retaining our tree canopy and some type of filtration through vegetation, I think is what they had recommended underneath that section. Energy uses, I think there's, you know, quite a few items within this section that are just implying that maybe a future council is gonna, you know, go in that direction. City's current goal of reducing carbon emissions by 20% of the 2005 baseline by 2020, that's a, you know, was directed by the city council, and that's a current goal. There is a recommendation, not really a recommendation, more of a, you know, upon completing of this goal, a new plan would target the city's fossil fuel consumption at net zero. You know, I think that's just kind of assuming that that is the, not necessarily recommending, but assuming that a future council is gonna make that determination and go towards net zero. So I, you know, I have some concerns with, you know, some of those statements within this section, as well as, you know, after 2025, no fossil fuel systems with an anticipated useful life past 2040 will be repaired or placed into service. And, you know, that'd be a major policy change that we would have to work through, and it, you know, would assume that that future council would, you know, make that policy law at that time. So I think some of these things, we would maybe go through and look at, maybe geared towards more recommendations instead of more towards this will happens?
Aspirational, you mean?
Yeah, type of thing.
Which is really what European countries have been doing, is creating targets of carbon neutrality, but they aren't, you know, that's aspirational though, because they're just working towards it. It's...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Transportation, you know, a lot of great things here. Expand smart transit, increase bicycle pedestrian transportation throughout the city, you know, another great thing. Mention electrical vehicle charging stations. I think that that's something that you'll probably start to see more and more of as we get more electrical vehicles. The issue right now is you only have a certain distance that you can travel with electric vehicles, so you have to have charging stations to stop. And, you know, it's, if we have one in the downtown, you know, maybe it's in Jackson Parking Lot or, you know, another location that's centralized, then, you know, I'd have to, somebody would have to park and charge their vehicle, but they could also shop downtown and heat launch or spend some money downtown as well. So it's more or less just, looks like promotion of, you know, more energy grids for electrical vehicle charging stations. We cover. Infrastructure and environmental impacts, more focusing on higher density and field development, green infrastructure, stormwater swales and pervious, or pervious, excuse me, pervious surfaces for parking lots, stormwater management, things like that. Climate migration, you know, the idea that people are gonna be fleeing these areas. So if California continues to have these fire wildfires that are destroying homes and people start to leave because of these effects, maybe the ocean rises and you have a lot of, number of people that are displaced from certain areas because of climate impact. They'll start flooding areas like Moscow, which is, you know, a little bit safer of a place than some other areas, maybe on the coast. And so thinking of that idea and just more or less trying to consider a higher population growth rate than we've typically seen over the years, which has, you know, usually been about 1.3%. And maybe we could get a, you know, influx of people that are looking to move up to Moscow at one single point in time and trying to plan for that occurrence. Food security, we do a lot of this already, you know, with kind of our local food production surrounding the area, but they're promoting local food production in order to mitigate potential food supply issues. So you could have issues in other parts of the country, and if we grow our own here, we'd be less susceptible to some type of a market price increase or a transportation issue with getting the food here. And also promoting urban agriculture, which we, you know, had inserted a number of years ago within the zoning code in order to allow agriculture within the city. So already doing quite a few of those things. And then public health and...
Mike, just rolling back on that for a second.
Sure.
Something that wasn't clear to me when I was reading it is, we had talked, in our zoning code, we have, vacant lots have to be paired with a property that's occupied, though, right, for urban agriculture? Am I misremembering something? It's just, it seemed like what they were proposing maybe goes beyond what we allow in the zoning code. That's what, I'd have to go back and check it.
Well, you have accessory gardens, which are just anybody's garden in their backyard. And you have market gardens.
Right. And it was market gardens had to be tied to...
I thought we relaxed that.
They're, yeah.
Maybe we did. I remember the discussion, but I can't remember the outcome.
Yeah, they ended up being permitted uses. So...
Okay.
It was the previous situation where a lot had to have a primary structure in order to have a secondary garden.
That was what I was remembering without whether we changed it.
Relaxed, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah. So right now, the permitted uses, so you have an R1 or R2 zone that just allows single-family. Permitted uses would be market garden, community garden, accessory garden.
Okay. Okay. So we got it. Never mind. So, thanks.
And then, I think the last section discusses public health and affordable housing. And, you know, just kind of covers or highlights the impacts, health impacts of promoting walkability and being able to, the trail system and being able to bike throughout the city and the health impact that that brings, as well as density and housing types like a twin home or a townhouse that are, cost less to construct, provide more affordable housing options to the population. So, a little bit more detail, I've just tried to summarize it, so it wasn't redundant, but I guess Victoria would probably be the best one to ask questions since she was on the Sustainable Environment Commission that generated these things. So, actually, I don't think I'm done. I've got, so at the end, they have kind of a, some following points that might be developed as goals, objectives, implementation, and appropriate sections. Short-term contract with a vested in biolectrical electric power for all renewable sources. Create, augment, update reference lists and appropriate city documents, sources that assist entrepreneurs, businesses, citizens, and furthering smart development and usage in conjunction with mitigating or adapting to climate change, such as reference lists for green building material vendors, comparative products, cost effectiveness. Might belong in the building code source online or print, available to public reference. And then links to other germane climate chain, climate plan documents such as UFI Climate, UI Climate Action Plan, UI Sustainability Center, et cetera. And I thought, you know, when I was reading through these, I thought that this would be a great project for Sustainable Environment Commission to come out with, not necessarily implementation actions in the comp plan.
It's not, not, the thinking, I think, is just, we didn't write that as, here, this is also part of the language. It was, you know, thinking about things that might get pointed to from the comp plan and not knowing exactly how you want to do that with a comp plan, or if you want to do that with a comp plan. You do have green building standards. We don't know all that stuff, you know, but that various lists and sources are out there or could be developed, more of them could be developed and just a way to point to it.
Okay. And then I didn't put these into PowerPoint form, but at the end, a couple, amending a couple sections under natural settings. I think Victoria had talked about this before, about pollin, you know, they've done some work on pollinator habitats and things of that nature and inserting that. You know, we talked about repairing wetlands, habitats, and inserting pollinator habitats within the natural settings section. At the very end. So that's in your, that page right there. Yes. So do we want to talk about this, or should we cover the library, and then we can talk about them both? Or how would you like to?
Well, one comment. I agree with much of what's in this document, but I also agree that it's not exactly in the same form as the rest of our comprehensive plan. So I that it's not exactly in the same form as the rest of our comprehensive plan, so I don't think it can be inserted without some...
Yeah, I would agree.
Massaging.
I would agree with that.
And one of the issues, I guess, that's bothering me is that, and I guess it relates to the no regrets thing, lots of these things that should be done for other good reasons. And in fact, the comprehensive plan does list many of these things under those other good reason topic areas. So, I'd like to see this inserted, but it needs to cut down the redundancy to the places where it's also covered somehow.
Or refer to those places.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of text compared to the other aspects of our, a lot more detail.
Oh.
Areas.
You know, I like, I like almost all of the thoughts that are covered in there.
Well, I could, like I said, I, you know, if you chose to insert, you know, I like the concept, I was gonna take some time to go down and, yeah, try to convert it to kind of the language that we use in the comp plan and I could bring that back and you could take a look at it and...
Well, we did not try to be the writer of the comp plan. We tried to do what we thought we were asked to do.
Well, you gave context for your plans.
Yeah, give context and provide details and make some applications and beef up that awareness for climate change response. And it correlates with smart development. But, and we just crafted it as best as we could guess and then fully recognizing that you would have to take it and do it in the language of the comp plan and take it from there. And, like that would, should have been a could, tried not to say, do this, we will do this, tried to make it as we could, we might, potential as in, that kind of thinking, not, not to, this is what we're gonna do.
Well, I think it seems like the basic, you know, highlighted subtitled categories are a good organizational tool, it's just streamlining the dialogue under each of them, maybe, I don't know, that would be...
That gets into the editorial thought and I can't go there.
Right, no.
I didn't write the comp plan, I don't know how to go there.
Yeah, no, I think it's, well, does anybody have any thoughts on whether we'd like, Mike, to maybe take a shot, I guess it would be you, Mike, unless we had a subcommittee of people doing it, to try to come back with a distilled version of this to look at?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it...
I think it, I think it needs probably one individual to do the first cut at it and...
Rather than by committee here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rather than by committee. And it'll be up to us as a commission to see exactly what we lost in that.
Well, it might be, I know there's that fine line between redundancy and also being within the context of our comprehensive plan. And I was looking, I just happened to look at, you know, the line, the city should continue its efforts to improve the pedestrian and bicycle experience such as developing connected pathway systems, et cetera. That seems to tie in and as, and it could almost be referential, as stated in section six of chapter whatever, that, you know, and these types of strategies are kind of woven all the way through the comprehensive plan.
I was thinking the same thought when this document was talking about the smart transportation system, yeah, that's it.
I mean, the other thing I would add to it from the Historic Preservation Commission, in a sense, is that all buildings have embodied energy, they've already expended energy to create the materials, transport them to the site, build them, et cetera. And every time you take a building down and replace it with something else, you've lost that embodied energy and it's kind of going in the wrong direction for carbon neutrality. And, so, there, you know, there's a tie there that I would have put in here if I'd been sitting on your commission.
Revitalization.
Yeah, yeah, so, that's, you know...
Well, I imagine if you were to talk to any commission, they'd think of something we didn't think of.
Right, I know, I know, I'm just thinking about it from that perspective. So, I think there's obvious overlaps between, you know, interests and, you know, and I would love the Tree Commission to be here because we keep promoting the importance of trees, but we allow, we don't have any underground utilities most places, and so the trees get hacked when they get mature and, you know, practically don't stand up on a lot of streets. So, that's, you know, that's another issue.
Well, our agreement with the Vista is that every new project, everything has to go underground, so.
Oh, yeah.
All the existing things.
But it's really hard to go back and get the, yeah, I mean, I feel lucky to live on a street where the utilities run down the alley, so the trees can canopy the street and do the job they're supposed to do, but it's hard to do and, especially when there's utilities running down both sides of the street. And on these small residential streets, you kind of wonder why they can't just pull them all over to one side, even if they're above ground. Anyway, but I see conflicts built into some of the things that are actually happening. You know, it was interesting also, the, I just heard a report on the reliability of wind power with the impact of climate change, that they expect it, you know, Washington State has really, you know, invested heavily in wind power and climate change is expected to diminish winds in certain locations and, so those, you know, it's just like, it's such a complicated matrix. So, it's looking at, I guess, circumstances that are within our control versus those that aren't. And, but, you know, that's, I don't know. So, I think that no regret, you know, I've heard the no regrets, going to APA and ACSP conferences, I've heard the no regrets kind of approach espoused for quite a few years now, that, you know, things like the urban heat island effect, trying to mitigate that because everybody experiences it, you go to a parking lot in the summertime and you try to find a tree to park under. And it's that, it's things that people can, measures that help to make people's lives better in all these other ways, health of walking, et cetera, also, you know, do the double duty. And so, whether people are believers in climate change or not is not really the core issue, it's what's good for the community. And I think that, that approach makes sense, so.
And what's affordable.
Right, right.
Some of this is so market driven.
Right.
I mean, if we can't afford to build because we want every parking lot shaded, you know, we're not gonna grow, we won't be able to live here.
Right. So, yeah, and we sort of, in a subcommittee we had this summer, we kind of did the compromise on that and made, and hit the parking landscaping for sort of mid-sized projects and bigger and not the smaller ones and increased the requirements a bit, but not, you know, for every, yeah.
Also made them more flexible in terms of layouts and the way they can make some choices.
Right, yeah, so it gave a, kind of tried to mitigate from both directions, both economically and environmentally, so. So, I guess, it seems to me that, I don't think we necessarily have to vote on this, but it would be helpful if you could take a shot at trying to distill it.
Sure.
So that it fits in the language better and gets the key aspects.
Yeah.
And if, in your spare time. I don't know.
And I guess, if you can, Mike, try to, try to link some of the recommendations to the, to the other places where they're...
Right, where they're aforementioned.
Yeah, yeah.
So, this would be... Okay, so, should we move on to the library recommendations?
Sure. And they're fairly short.
Yeah, they're almost not detailed enough. It's kind of goes from one extreme to the other, it's like, okay, what do you really mean here? So, basically, everything that's bolded, I guess, my blue handwritten print.
Yeah, it did come out in blue, so it's everything that's bolded is what they proposed to add. So, you gotta have an introduction, talking about, you know, how Moscow's such a nice place with distinctive character, cultural activity center and kind of all these different bullet points about how the, having a strong public library is good for Moscow. And so, they've got some areas that they would propose inserting a few statements. The first one's under education, culture, and the arts, talking about how that aspect is a critical part of Moscow's quality of place. And then goes on to say that good schools are often one of the most significant considerations for highly educated parents who are considering relocation, and they're proposing to insert a strong and active public library as essential to attracting and retaining such residents. It's expected that Moscow's growing population of senior citizens would also enjoy accessing continuing education such as university course audits, distinguished speakers, and lecture programs. So, incorporating that within that section and then further on underneath the arts, talks about kind of our subsection of independent artists, writers, performers in Moscow. And then, we've got MSI projecting 66 new independent artists, writers, performers will enter the Moscow economy since the last comp plan. And then, so we have ensuring that appropriate areas are zoned for live-work units, that could include artists' workspace and galleries in a neighborhood with residential characters, and invest in public art and ensure that artistic elements are integrated into new infrastructure investments, which we do. A city could also go further by creating a program for, of incentives for artists who relocate to Moscow. And then, they'd be proposing to add another bullet point on there to enhance access to the Moscow Public Library through the developments of its physical capacity. And then, the last section, leveraging existing assets. We have some implementation actions, you know, kind of goes through, you know, ensuring new commercial developments consistent and compatible with the character of Moscow and contributes to the community's quality of life, allow development and redevelopment mixed-use projects in and around downtown area to bring activity and vitality to the downtown area, continue to support the work of the Moscow Arts Commission to develop and promote festivals and cultural events and integrate public art and artistic elements within public and private developments. And then, they'd be proposing to add one onto these six to include seven to strengthen the Moscow Public Library, especially its ability to continue and enhance its service.
So, that left me with a big how. Because the other, everything else does a little more of the how and it's like, expand services, increase facility size, growth in the county, is this, because they also talk about the growth in the county and yet, we're really dealing with the city. And I'm not opposed to it, it just seems like it's a pretty general statement, it's pretty, not, not much of an implementation action.
Yeah, I know, it, that's, that was my thought, you know, it's implementation actions, which are intended to be things that we can, as we do them, we can cross them off.
Right, right.
So, you know, and the thought is, how do we know when we've accomplished that?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it would be helpful to know, do they need a bigger facility in town, or do they need a second facility in town, or do they, you know, and it's, is that more, would that reflect changes in technology? I mean, you go to the Seattle Public Library and, you know, for people who don't read much, like my son, he goes in there and it's all computers everywhere and he goes crazy and loves it. So, is it a different, what do they mean, you know, what do they have in mind for, how, what's their idea of strengthening? That would be a question I would fire back to them.
Sure.
Well, is it an implementation or an objective?
Well, the last one's an implementation action.
Well, I know, that's what they state, but is it an objective?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, to me, it sounds more like an objective.
Yeah, I agree.
It's an objective.
Shifted over to that.
And then you have an implementation action that tells you how to get there.
Yeah, yeah, so, do a study of increased capacity and, you know, location, and maybe there's a need for a library that's over on the east side of town that kind of, in addition, and they probably don't have the budget for that, but I'm just throwing that one out as an idea that, you know, that there's sort of population spheres, kind of like fire departments, you know, you end up sprouting where development happens. So, that would help us guide planning is why I asked that question, but, anyway.
So, another thing that struck me was under the arts part, it talks about arts and then it sort of tacks on the library, which I don't necessarily think of as arts, you know. To me, I can halfway fix it or fix it by saying, enhance access to the Moscow Public Library through the development of its physical capacity for a variety of related resources and cultural activities. Because they do talks, they do displays, they do activities, they have the whole computer thing, you know. To me, that brings that part halfway there.
Well, you almost want arts and culture as the top of the list.
Because it's tacking the library into an arts section.
Right.
Our books are...
It's really culture. Well, yeah, I know, I know, the library has everything, but it feels tacked on and it doesn't feel like it's a part and it needs some kind of tweaking to make it fit there or to, or to do something so that it fits.
Yeah. And they do group artists, writers, and performers.
I mean, really, we need to think of the library beyond books.
Yeah.
And that's, that's part of it.
Right. Well, they're about to have public art on the wall, you know, then, yeah.
So, that's part of what should be here.
Yeah. Any other comments on this? So, I think they need to give us some more development, more delineation of what they mean. We can hit Chris up tomorrow in Historic Preservation.
Oh, I had a question, would you, I know it's around somewhere, I didn't know what it is anymore, creative class, is that the word that was used in the letter?
Yeah, yeah. I, there's a little bit of a tone of elitism in this whole thing that bothered me a bit.
But that was in the letter and it really bothered me, but it was in the letter part.
Yeah, I was a little bit, you know.
But, yeah, okay, I reacted to it too.
Okay. I should keep my mouth shut on that. It's under, but I...
But I also don't, you know, they have, and it's in the letter, so it's not...
Number four.
It's not part of the plan language.
Right, but where it sort of shows up.
And they've got creative class there and I don't know what...
Well, we do talk about the creative class in the comp plan.
Oh, okay. So, they did pull it out of there, so I guess we're just...
Can you define it for me, because I don't remember.
Creative class is more like millennials, you know, creating...
The rest of us aren't.
Yeah.
We're millennials.
Yeah, it's more of, you know, startup, small startup businesses, entrepreneur, you know, entrepreneurialism, developing new ideas, you know, kind of the Google generation.
Well, knowledge-based comes out of the two universities having the knowledge corridor and, you know, the, and sort of the innovations that come out of, I would say, from the university's culture, probably from research and stuff, but, I don't know, it's... So, it... Any other comments? I guess we're, we're pretty much done with that one.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, I'll contact Chris, and we can talk through that and bring it down.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I felt it was just really lean and too general. So it was polarized.
It's easier to lean down and shape it the way you want, than to not know what you have to shape.
Right, right, so we're second guessing you, we are, otherwise, yeah. So I guess the land use map is the next.
Yeah, so this is, it hasn't really changed a whole lot since last time, but I sent out the large copy. Hopefully you were all able to open that and take a look at it, and just more or less wanted to, you know, if you had any questions about any of the designations, or wanted to discuss any of those, or, you know, any ideas. But I just, kind of, this isn't updated since we did it last time. I think the only change I made was Lily and Otten's Park. I got that on there, so.
I saw it.
I was putting it together.
It was my magnifying glass, I saw it.
Unfortunately, I brought my, the one I had already marked up. So this suburban commercial, what is this little pink thing on the northeast corner of the map? I couldn't quite figure out what that is.
Yeah, it's, it's more meant to be a neighborhood commercial zone.
Oh, okay.
It points to, you know, it's the same as Harvest Hills designation down here.
Okay.
Though, those are the convergence of two arterials.
Okay.
We figure that, you know, this is kind of pre-planning that we'd need some type of neighborhood services in this area as population grows in that northeast area, which is going to be, you know, probably the likely area that we'll see some growth in the future just because of, you know, Logos School annexing and expanding out here, putting in the roundabout. They'll be running utility services out there, so, you know, we have a lot of large trail property here that could be sold in the future and subdivided, and so, you know, instead of having it all developed as residential and having a bunch of angry residents, that we're going to be putting commercial out there.
Have it there before they get there.
No, it's just, you know, we don't have any commercial services in that area of town, and it's just, you know, looking at an area that you'd have, that would be appropriate to have some neighborhood business, commercial development. And it points to, you know, areas in close proximity to arterials, and being the convergence of trail road there, and Mountain View, which are two arterials, and we thought it'd be appropriate. But, yeah, that hasn't changed, that was original from two thousand nine, so we haven't done any changing there, that's the way it's been.
I just hadn't really noticed it.
Reduce those carbon emissions by keeping them out there in the neighborhood.
One thing I was, was doing was running through the dotted lines and dashed lines and so on, and seeing where they were located, and one, one I had trouble with was the dashed lines for alternative Highway Eight alignment. I don't find any alternative Highway Eight alignment on the map. Seen that on other maps, but. I assume that is maybe the line we've sometimes seen using part of Pluse River Drive.
I think that was meant, that was meant to be the Ring Road, so that was.
Yeah.
That's what we, that was the symbol we had for the Ring Road in the eastern quadrant.
It's a southeastern quadrant.
Yeah, southeastern, and now that we've removed that, I just didn't remove it from the legend, so, yeah, good catch.
Just wondering if I was missing something.
No, it's just, yeah, we had, you know, in that southeast and northeast, we had just, you know, transportation recommended using the existing roads, and I just hadn't removed that from the legend, so.
Do the, I gather that private roads don't show up in here? I was specifically thinking of, what is it, Campus Commons, the, to the South Ninety-Five. I don't see the, the internal roads for that. I assume that's the orange.
Yeah, and those, it would just really be a parking lot, you know, traveling to the parking lot for, you're talking about Campus Crest, the Grove, the student housing project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and they don't show up because they're private, or?
Well, they're not roads, that's just part of their parking lot when you go in there. So we have, we do have Southview that accesses it from Main Street, and you have Nursery that goes up. And so those are on there, but the actual, it's really, they're not even really roads. They're just, it's just drive aisles for parking lots.
Okay.
In that, within that development. And then all, they all have a Southview address for that, for that development as well. So they're all addressed off of the main street that goes into them, so.
Well, I was, I guess I was, was thinking that the, sort of a consequence of that is that the orange looks unoccupied. And the same for some of the other oranges, which are, actually do contain things, but.
They're just large lot, large lot development with parking lot circulation on site.
Maybe that's inevitable.
And to me, that was one of the things that justified giving it a separate category than urban residential, which has a really tight, finely grained delineation.
Good Samaritan's, another orange block that doesn't have any detail in there, but that's, they're just driveways.
Yeah, if it's just a driveway, we won't show it, but if it's, you know, a private road, typically we do. So, like Prospect Place off of West Pluse River Drive, you know, when Sunnyside goes up, the single-story daylight basement, retirement community there on the northwest corner. Those are private streets, and those show up. Greensides up on North Polk Street, those, those streets show up there as well. And then I think that, looking out on White Avenue, looks like, kind of hard to see, but it, Green Acres does show up as a circular street through that, so we do have, you know, most of the private streets, or actual streets, do, do show up.
Okay, actually, they, they show up better on the screen than they do on the printed version.
Yeah, so that, you know, going through there, Green Acres, Tambo, those, those are actual, those are private roads, private streets, but, so we show them there.
Okay, because they, because they don't show up at all on the, on the printed version.
But, and what, yeah.
Which is.
Yeah, and it's going to be small if it's in the.
Yeah, and part of it is, I have all the parcel layer over top of this. So some of the parcels there, you know, once you, if you overlay them on top, there's some of them you can show, but if you overlay too many of them on this.
It looks like black.
It just, yeah, turns black just because of the detail.
Okay.
But most of them we do for, for the private roads. Like the villages, we don't, just because, you know, that's more of a looped drive through there, and they have a, like an Indian Hills address.
Anybody have any comments from looking through this, that sides, what's been said? It was, it was helpful to zoom around on the screen a little bit in order to see it up there. It's hard to, yeah. Smaller. Okay, so is there, do you have any, anybody have any direction for Mike on further development of this, or? Everything pretty good?
I think it's pretty well there, other than removing that one dotted red line.
Yeah, good catch on the legend, yeah. Okay, well, I guess that brings us to the last item on the agenda, which is shared readings. If people have a chance to read it.
Pretty small type.
I think originally we had it, we were discussing it first meeting in January.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just.
I thought that, too, so I was wondering, what do you want to do?
I guess I was waiting for this. I'm looking for some excuse as to why I didn't read it.
Well, I think it's very relevant to what's going on now with the Third Street multimodal bridge traffic calming project, because it really takes a look at not just Third Street, but basically what we have. I took it as a continuing ed class, and that's how I got into it. And it, we have, it's a new way, it's a better way, I think, of looking at minor arterials, such, the zone between city streets and major arterials, that zone, and, and doing a more comprehensive planning of that, of them, and calling them thoroughfares that balance between just moving people from one side of town to the other, and, and recognizing the preservation of neighborhood character, and, and the qualities. And to me, what, I guess, I would like to maybe defer this discussion since people haven't really had a chance to. But I would like to say that when I read this, this little description, my hackles go up because it's like, it's all starting in nineteen ninety-four, the convenience of getting people from one side of town to another. So it's kind of pitting one neighborhood against another, rather than thinking about an inclusive process that gets the best streets we can possibly get for everybody. And that's, that's where I'd like to see us go, and I think this article, this course, lays out a process that's been used in other places to start to, to look at how you really get a more user-responsive street design that hits all the modes of, of traffic and transit, and, and people moving, rather than just focusing on handling this volume of cars and, and triggering some new title because it's fallen into a new category of traffic volume, rather than thinking about, well, what's it doing to the native, the actual character, and how do you have that street design respond to the, the character, and, and fine tune it? So a thoroughfare, an urban corridor, or a corridor may change in its character as it goes through to reflect more what that neighborhood design is about, what, what makes, gives it its identity and, and what it's trying to be. And, and I think it commands a really inclusive process, and the article, or the chapters kind of lay out what that process needs to be. And I don't think we're doing it, you know, we have this ongoing thing right now, but it's kind of disconnected. I mean, I, I raised the question right from the beginning, why wasn't somebody from planning and zoning even included in that committee? Because we are supposed to be a commission, are we just joking that somewhere in our comprehensive, I'm sounding like Nels, and I don't mean to, but it's, but are we just talking like we like walkability and all this stuff, but we aren't really allowed to participate in the decisions that impact those kinds of things? And, and so I guess I would really encourage you to read it so we can have a vibrant discussion in January about it, because I think it, you know, there's, it's a lot of text, I know, and I had a reason, because it's, you know, renewal of my architectural license, that I have to do this, but it's only the first four chapters I had to read, don't they? But it sets out, you know, principles for network planning, but, but more importantly, I think the most important part is, is the corridor planning itself, not so much the, the whole network, which you'd see in the whole street system in a community this size, but, anyway, so.
Wendy, I just question, because this, not being a professional planner, this just looked like a lot of numbers in certain places. So you're, you're saying that chapter, chapters one through four, but especially chapter three would be a good place to focus?
Well, no, I'm saying probably.
What, how should we, how should those of us who are not used to reading this kind of stuff?
Right, right, right. Well, I would say that really, chapter one is just, you know, a pretty quick introduction. Chapter two's important, and chapter, let's see, chapter three is, gets more into process. And let's see, I didn't, I didn't print the whole thing out. Oh, you did.
No, and, and did.
Oh, and did, okay. I, I've been looking at it on my computer, so I, I didn't print it, I'm sorry. I was just trying to get a few pages for, so the, the process for complete streets really comes through in, in urban, what they call context-sensitive urban thoroughfares, which, instead of calling it a minor arterial, it's kind of a more appropriate and enlightened description to say context-sensitive urban thoroughfares. And it really kind of, chapter one just explains what context-sensitive thoroughfares are, and then chapter two talks about the process to get there. So I would say the first two chapters are particularly important. And then chapter three looks at the corridor plans within the, within the context of entire networks. But it also does, let's see, it also looks more at the whole network. So I would say that first two chapters are the most important for what we're doing, with highlights in some of the other ones, but I, you know, unfortunately, I read it a month ago, so the breakdown of chapters is not, is clear in my mind, I'll try to organize it, but.
But I agree, because I have read it. The latter chapters is like, look like a bunch of numbers.
Yeah, the latter chapters are case study applications, really, more than, and so, you know, there are some, yeah, I would say just really looking at the first two is the most important, so.
So this sounds like I need to at least browse through this before my meeting tomorrow.
Well, I, I think we would have a more enlightened approach to this whole problem, you know, rather, than, than we have. And it'd get more stakeholders buying into the whole concept if they were included in the process. I mean, you know, it's, it's, the way this, this little cover is written, it's like, let's just zip people across town, because all the growth, growth is east of town, let's just ruin all the other neighborhoods on the way. I mean, that's, that's what I get from reading this, and it's not, it's, it annoyed the heck out of me when I read that. And so I thought, what bus did I miss here, because I didn't even know it was happening. But that's my little tirade for tonight, I'm sorry. But I, but I would encourage you to read it, and so, yeah, we did originally discuss having it.
Yeah, I put it on there just more or less to.
Remind people? Yeah, okay, so, the more you can read, the more you'll learn, but I would say after about chat.
Chapter three is good, too.
Yeah, chap, okay, so the first three chapters, because it, then it starts to get more detailed and more. It's really, the first three chap, I can't remember how it breaks down, but the first three or four chapters, especially the first three, are designed more for including laypersons in the, in the mix. And then it starts to get target design professionals and planners, and that would probably be, and transportation.
Your design starts with chapter five.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, we just really.
I, I'm not sure I remember a whole lot out of chapter four, but I think the three was good.
Yeah, okay, so, and I'm sorry, because I did read it a month ago, and I don't, the chapters have blended in my head.
And it's not something I'm going to be able to hold in my brain.
Yeah, no, yeah, it's a lot, and I, I didn't want to scare people by having the whole, whole thing, but it was, it's, I think it's a good resource, and, and I think it represents a more enlightened approach to how we should be looking at the. a more enlightened approach to how we should be looking at these, you know, sixth, D, and third, all, all three of them, so.
Okay.
So, anyway, that's my soapbox for tonight, and thank you. Did you, did you have something you want, oh, oh, never mind, yeah, I was thinking you were here for this to see what, but that's not it. Commission. All right, is, do I hear, I guess we don't need to have a motion for adjournment, that's for faculty, we need the soap. We'll see you later. Yeah.